Bless you. Whoever that was.
Are we ready?
Yes.
To start? Okay. So, we appreciate the opportunity to come before the commission this evening. To remind everybody about what exactly is the the public safety sales tax. Just as a reminder for everybody that it's a half cent. Sales tax which is paid for not only by the Pittsburgh community. But by any visitors that may come into the in the city itself and. Purchase fuel or or spend money at our restaurants. So, the history of the of the P S S T started back in twenty thirteen, there was a vote. A special election that went before the Pittsburgh citizens. For a half cent sales tax that would benefit not only the police but the fire department as well. This would be a ten year tax. Sales tax and it is planned to expire on the end of twenty twenty three, so this year December thirty first. There is the special election which we're all aware of coming up in two weeks from today. April eleventh. To continue on to renew the existing sales tax. So, nuts and bolts, well, how exactly has the P S S T benefited the police and fire department? I will speak for a few minutes about the police department and I'll turn it over to the fire chief. So, there's three broad categories or areas that it has benefited the police departments. Which would be staffing, technology, and then equipment. So, as far as the staffing positions, we have invested in additional sworn or sworn positions. Be it in both the patrol division and in the criminal investigations division. We've seen, we've also invested in additional dispatchers. We have a crime analyst position. And then we have a special drug prosecutor position as well, which solely focuses on Pittsburgh cases. And that is at the district court level. Technology side. Some main expenditures there, investments there would be the records management system. And computer aided dispatch system which we implemented oh roughly seven or so years ago. That really brought us in brought us into the twenty first century of policing. It's an it enabled us to. Track statistically more so what we do as a law enforcement agency. Then kind of analyze that data and then allocate resources to particular areas in town if we can identify trends. The the CAD side of it. Which is more the dispatch side of things. Has is a shared platform with the Crawford County Sheriff's Department as well as P S U Police Department. So, that has enabled and allowed our agencies to better communicate between each other in a variety of ways. Not only in the. In the criminal reports we take, but sometimes even more importantly. On the minute by minute or second by second. Tracking of where are our police officers and all of our three different agencies so we can better. Facilitate responses and just understand where all the other agencies maybe are if they need mutual aid efforts. And then finally, on the equipment side, some of the highlights of the equipment has been our body worn cameras. Funding for that as well as tasers. And then our patrol vehicles and just miscellaneous related equipment. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to the fire chief.
All right. On on our PowerPoint here, just going down the line, the the first thing that really impacted us was the third bullet point of breathing equipment and fire gear. At that time, we were in in need of new S C B As, the air packs that we put on when we. When we work in a structured fire or any other kind of hazardous environment. Those packs were updated with lighter frames, held more capacity of air. And we're able to allow our guys to get in there and work to to reach, reach their ultimate objective. The the fire gear that can that is along with that is is the bunker gear. The the higher quality. The it's better put together, all the stuff is the is essentially the same fabric, but the way it's put together. Fit our guys better, it's custom fit so that that they are able to move and be wholly protected. However, they are are down, whether they're crawling, walking. However, they're they're covered up better and fit them very, very well. Going on down from that to the fifth bullet point, we hit the training and the supplies. I jumped over the fire truck, the big shiny red fire truck. The fire truck was the our engine one or squad one now at station one. First out, very reliable truck, it it replaced nearly a almost a thirty year old truck. Became our first out at station one, it came. With equipment on it, with equipment, with hose on it. Which bolstered our our overall equipment cache. You know, that allowed us to get to to scenes reliably, to get there quickly and safely. Moving down with with the training and supplies then, you know, our guys were able to. Go out and and get instruction from people who got it got us out of our own little area. People who possibly fight fires every day. And have have learned techniques and ways to come back and teach our guys to make make our own operation here. More efficient, more effective, and ultimately safer for us and for anybody that we're trying to help. All of this stuff put together with the equipment and the training and the apparatus. Helped us to attain the N I S O rating of two. Which for for the firefighter, the firefighter themselves doesn't see it other than having better equipment, better training, better supplies. But the community really sees that in in the lowering of their insurance rates. For years prior to that, we had been at an I S O of a three. One of those things that lower is better, so once we were able to get to a two, that gets us. It's a large step, but it feels like one small step away from a one, which you're not gonna find unless it is a major, major metropolitan area. That has thousands of firefighters and just all kinds of money being thrown at them. But a two is is the next best thing and that has has been impacted in our community. Overall, so. That's that's where we have have put it to use over the last ten years. With with the apparatus, the gear, the breathing equipment and the training, so moving on.
So, this pie chart is a breakdown of roughly where all of these expenditures, the investments has gone. Towards obviously personnel is with any organization is a huge cost. And then if you have any questions at the end, we'll certainly be available to answer any of those questions. To the best of our ability. Next slide, so then what are the future plans if and when? The the tax, the sales tax is renewed in two weeks. Certainly, we would continue on with the investments that we've already. Implemented with the staffing, the the technology, there's always upkeep with the technology, software, things of that nature. Vehicles replacements. But then we'd be looking at what additional projects or programs that we could look at to. Enhance our ability as a law enforcement agency to to continue to better serve the community. Some of those. The top item there is behavioral health, so that's been a. Hot button, hot ticket item that we've seen around the nation, a lot of challenges associated with that around the nation. And we just had an incident yesterday which compounds or really just underlines some of the issues we've. We've been seeing around the nation as far as behavioral health challenges. So, how can potentially the police department, a law enforcement agency, how could they be a piece of that solution for a community, for the Pittsburgh community? So, we'll keep our options open for that, we we currently have strong working relationships with. A number of community partners, be it community health or Crawford County mental health. We continue to foster those relationships and we look forward to how we can team together in the future and just better serve the needs of our community. So, ultimately, when we're looking at that. How can we better investigate crimes, but more more importantly, how can we better deter criminal activity in the community? With these different projects or programs, these new projects or programs that we may implement. Communication devices. As far as radios and things of that nature, just communication in general, we're always looking better ways for that, the digital age. Of radios and and the fire chief will talk about that as well as how's that affects the fire department. But as far as the PD, that's generally what we're looking at for the future, so.
All right, so so moving into the future. What we're looking at doing with this is is replacing aging apparatus. Again, the the our new engine one squad one is 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 a beautiful truck, it's getting ten years old, it's not getting replaced. But we do have trucks that are aging up, twenty two years old. Our guys, you know, thumbs up to them, they do a fantastic job of maintaining and and keeping these trucks looking good, running good. But twenty two years takes a toll on on any machine of any kind, so. That is that is one of our top priorities is getting that truck replaced. As far as working on the communication devices. We're looking at updating our our radios for our firefighters, radios that are are designed. To operate in the I D L H environments that we go into that. You know, we go in with with big, big puffy gloves on to protect our hands and they have big buttons for us to use, big knobs. For us if we've got to change the channel. And and again, they they are made to go in there, so they they don't burn, they don't melt nearly as easily as as some of the radios that we have now would. With that, we're also, we're also looking at updating our gear. And and our S C B As are getting to a point now where they have about five years left on the bottles. The bottles can be can be basically recertified or hydro tested every five years and they get three cycles of that, so. We're coming into our last cycle of that where they're gonna have to be replaced. With that comes the air packs that have technological updates. Advancements, the frames are are lighter and more ergonomic so that they're easier on our firefighters and their backs. And so, we're gonna be be looking at updating that. One thing, and and I had forgot to mention it when Brent was talking about about the communications overall with dispatch. Something that I think possibly was was an overlooked side effect, it was a good side effect. Is that they their communications is is works with the county and with P S U P D. Because we operate under their dispatch and EMS operates under the county's dispatch. That was able to integrate our communications with them on medical calls a whole lot better. With the tablets we have in our trucks, if we hear that EMS is out, we can check that tablet and see, oh, that's in our city, this is what it is. So, our guys are already thinking about it, they're getting their stuff, they're getting in the truck and they're getting ready to go. With that, their response is is that much quicker. And they're they're more ready to to respond with that, so I guess. That was just kind of a recap of something I'd forgot before, we'll keep moving on here.
Okay, so through the end of this week. Through March thirty first, there's an opportunity for the community to get an advanced ballot. So, paid for by Friends of Pittsburgh, it says in the bottom there, so there's a community group and that hasn't not yet been mentioned, there's a community group. Of a number of our folks in the community that have been gracious enough to. Meet and to discuss whether or not, okay, is there a true need, is there really a need for renewal of the sales tax? So, this group came together. And I'll maybe let Darren speak more on that. One of those members are here tonight, actually Brooke Powell, so she'll come up here in a second, but this group has has come together. They have prepared this PowerPoint presentation that we've been able to use for that, but at this point. Like to have Brooke come up, please.
Good evening. Like Chief Nargis said, I was asked to join the Friends of Pittsburgh group. And in doing so, I didn't have a whole lot of knowledge about the sales tax and the renewal, but. I do have a lot of knowledge in working with law enforcement and the officers on staff along with the fire department and their staff. My day job is working at Safe House and and working with victims of violence and keeping them safe and then my. You know, life, I live here in Pittsburgh, I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, I moved here twenty years ago and and never left. And, you know, we fell in love with this with the town and the environment and the community. And so, I I care deeply for our our city and also our public servants that are. Putting themselves on the lines to do their jobs and protect us, but in doing so and being brought into this group. One of the first meetings, they Chief Nargis and Chief Churney were talking about. The updates and enhancements and improvements they were able to make with the technology, their equipment, hiring new staff. And at the end of the meeting, I was very sold on the renewal. It seemed like a a no brainer to me, it was a win win, they were gonna be able to continue with these enhancements and improvements. While, you know, creating new ideas to serve our community and keep our community members safe. And so, that's why I jumped on board, some of the key points that they've mentioned, the I O the I O S score. And it was even brought up today in a different meeting that we were in that. An insurance agent, she she said she uses that quite a bit when working with her clientele, so. That really just shows the importance of what what that has done in our community and. I just wanna encourage everyone to to vote for this on April eleventh, turn out and vote because it really. Will continue to impact our community in a positive way, it will continue to enhance and improve. The way we can serve individuals and keeping our community safe, but. I guess, there's any questions?
So, that's really the conclusion of our presentation, we can certainly open it up to any questions that any of us in the city staff can answer.
I do have one question, Taylor.
Yes, sir.
When I was on the department, they was trying out a voice activated. Air regulator for your mask. Do we still have them, so you're talking about communications on the radio?
Yes.
But we need to communicate with each other inside, do we still have that capability?
We we do, we still have, they're basically basically a microphone. That that you turn on when you when you mask up and go in there and it it allows your voice to come out more clearly. As opposed to just speaking through, you know. It comes out a little more, a little more clarified, but we do still have those, the guys still use them, they they work well. They are, they of your face mask, they are the most likely to get damaged. Because they they stick out right about there and they they snag and catch on things, but. We are looking at that is gonna be a part of it so that that there is clear, more clear. Speech coming through, the they still, they haven't perfected. There is a piece you can get that Bluetooth connects directly to your radio. It's out there, it's available and and when it works, it works well, but they have had, they've had troubles with them. That technology at this point will sometimes just kind of disconnect and reconnect, just like it it resets itself. And they've had trouble with that disconnecting and reconnecting, but in that split second. His radio might connect up with my microphone or vice versa. So, we're looking at it, but it's not, it's not exactly where we need it to be just yet, so.
Thanks. Can I have a comment for something Chief Nargis said at the beginning of this? That our citizens are the ones that going to have to vote for this public safety sales tax and I have no doubt that that will pass. But a benefit that we have with this public safety sales tax is not only for our citizens. Later on in a commission meeting, we're gonna replace some vests for the police department, their bulletproof vests. And that's probably paid for, I'm sure, out of public safety sales tax. And what do we do with them after, you know, they reach a a time when we need to trade them in? We donate them to smaller departments, just like we do with usable equipment with the fire department. And so, you know, a lot of these people that don't get to vote on sales tax, they do come to Pittsburgh and they spend their money in Pittsburgh to help pay for this equipment. So, it's always a good plus for us that we can give this equipment that's still in good shape to smaller departments, because this equipment is very expensive. And I always like it that we can donate it to area communities that can't afford this kind of equipment.
Yeah, that's a good point, there's always periodically, there's pieces of equipment like that that we can. Provide for these smaller agencies. They just are very, many of these small agencies in the county are just very strapped for. You know, that's a very significant purchase is one vest anywhere from one to two thousand dollars, so that's very significant, so, yep.
Good job.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Can. Can you intercommunicate between the police and the fire?
Through our radios?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
You can.
Now, it 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 takes a matter of, and and I know right what channel I need to go to, but I do have to manually switch to their channel or they'd have to manually switch to ours. A lot of our communication goes, will go through dispatch. Unless it is inherently urgent where we do need to switch, but. But every, all the guys are are trained, they are tested on making sure they know what channels to go to and and how to get there to to communicate directly.
Yeah, the direct communication is there, it's capable typically, our goal between is the dispatchers, so it's much more fluid. To to request dispatch from like the fire department and then they'll speak with us on our Tac One. It's just for continuity and consistency, that's normally the way we do it. But if if I wanna holler at the fire chief, we're both on scene different locations, I'll get on his frequency and certainly I can. Make that happen, override things, so yeah, we do have that flexibility.
Can you intercommunicate with any other departments?
Yeah, we we can just adjust, we have multiple options, like ten or twelve different options of frequencies. I can get on P S U P Ds and communicate with Chief Height. So, yeah, there's other agencies in the county and in in the city, city channels we can get on and communicate, so yes.
Is there better equipment available so that you, this just could be done better than it is right now?
I imagine there's always something better, as far as the technology side of that, the guy to answer that probably is our innovations guy, so maybe Jay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're currently working with Motorola on an overall approach to the to this communications equipment, all right? It's it's not particularly cheap, all right, but we're looking at, we kind of weigh it versus, you know, what what functionality we can get out of it versus versus the cost. And then the functionality of of how well it interacts with within the public safety responders, environments that that they're gonna be facing. So, we've got, we're pretty, we're pretty close to a solution, now we've been working with them for months actually on it, so we'll probably be bringing something to you here in the next few months.
Okay.
I have a question, Taylor, is there an industry standard in terms of how old a fire truck? Should be or?
There there is, and it it is, it is a very, I guess you call it subjective standard. NF P A, which is the guidelines that that we that kind of guides us in in all of our equipment and staffing and that sort of stuff. They recommend fifteen years on a fire truck before taking it completely out of service. Now, that is based off of studies throughout the major metropolitan areas, the trucks that are are running all day, every day. Our apparatus don't run nearly as much as say Kansas City or Dallas or New York, for goodness sake. And so, we're able to attach, we're able to put a few more years on ours. And then, you know, at at that twenty two year age, it's it's a truck that's in reserve status, it is still there to be used. That we do use, you know, if we're if we're working on one of our other trucks, having maintenance done, whatever, those trucks will come out and go to work. But yeah, to answer your question, yes, there is, we had, we've exceeded it. But with with the usage that they have, it is an acceptable, exceeding, I guess you call it.
Yeah. Acceptable variable. What about police, our police cars, is there? Is there a?
Yeah, normally, yeah, that's a good, good question, normally, you know, they hit the hundred thousand mile mark and that'll vary, it just depends on. The particular vehicle, who is assigned to, what shifts, driving and things of that nature, but. Covid certainly has thrown a wrench into our vehicle replacement program, we typically over the years have utilized a state contract. So, for two years now, we have not been able to utilize that, so. We as a city are looking at other options for that and that'll be some conversation that the city manager or. And and Mr. Bacon will be having along with assistance from us as well. And then I think the relative near future, so. Different times, Covid challenges, shortages of supplies, so we're trying to think outside the box as a city and I'll let. I'll say that's enough from me, but the city manager will have more on that in the near future, I think, so.
I I I know that occasionally, this is outside of your purveyance, but these the fire department answers emergency calls periodically, is that true? I mean, like.
Medical, medical.
Medical, yes, yes, we do.
Yeah. How is our, what, again, what is our stat, our ambulance status in the county, any idea?
That that would probably be, that would be a question best answered by by medical direction. Either either Randy Sandberg or or Dr. Stebbins, we. We don't do any kind of transportation of any kind of patients. So, all of our medical calls end with a patient speaking. With an ambulance crew, whether whether they were stationed in the city or outside the city. But as far as 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 where they're at in their overall situation, I am not sure.
Okay, well. Reason I ask that question is because I've heard rumors that that the calls, the ambulance calls are pretty long now. From the time of the call to dispatch to the time the ambulance gets there, which tells me that either they don't have enough personnel or enough vehicles. Because our people are answering you, your people are answering the calls before the ambulance.
Yes, and and that that could be due to to any number of things, whether they have a higher number of calls at that time. Or if they have a truck that's on a transfer, taking a patient from one hospital to another. That's that's something we've run into for years, so it's 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 not a situation that's foreign to us. And our guys know that that if they get on scene, then they have full patient care until they are relieved by by an ambulance crew, so.
Okay, thank you.
I was at a meeting recently with Commissioner Woods and he did express significant concern about staff.
So, you're just playing a supporting role to start with to them.
Yes.
And then how many people on your staff are certified, like?
Normally, everybody is certified, we we have a handful of of younger guys, newer hires that are are getting their certification right now.
And you're talking about E M T?
Yes, ma'am.
Type training?
E M T training, so, but yeah, we do require that everybody have that, they have an eighteen month window to attain that. To attain that and their firefighter one certifications, so. To attain that and their firefighter one certifications, so, um.
Is that only in your department or Brent, do you have officers that are EMT certified or not?
We may have one or two that may be EMT, um, typically, the majority are CPR certified, but uh, the advanced type care, that's. Typically been left up to the fire department, traditionally, that's just always been the case. I don't, I'm not aware, Commissioner Height, um, other law enforcement agencies in the county.
Well, I think there used to be a first responder certification, I think that's even kind of fallen by the wayside as far as medical first response.
Yeah, that was more of an emphasis back in ninety-six when I was in the police academy up in, out of state in Wisconsin, I was. A first responder technically in CPR, but um, yeah, it's fallen off the radar, I think, in the last couple decades, yeah.
Just to weigh in a little bit about the medical call through the fire department run, anything inside the city we respond to, we always have. Like Taylor was saying earlier, that usually it's two guys in a, a small truck.
Yep.
And you stay on scene until an ambulance gets there.
Mm-hmm.
And if the ambulance is tied up, you're there for however long.
That's it.
And then if we get a fire or another call, then you're two guys sh- shorthanded, so.
Well, and to, to follow that up, we're talking EMTs, the people on the ambulance or paramedics, they've got a whole different set of equipment, so we are limited.
Right, yeah.
Do, um, we may be on scene the whole time, but it may not be pretty if we don't have the right equipment and the right training.
That was better than nobody being on.
Well, no, we're, we're gonna go, but I just want people to understand.
Yeah.
We're not claiming to be.
I have another question, uh, going back to the behavioral health, does that have to do with policemen and firemen being whatever? You've come across like being shot at or someone dying whenever you're in a fire, is that where the behavioral health comes in?
That's a good question, that was brought up in our Young Professionals Noon um, uh, presentation. And um, we, at the police department, we do have a peer support team. Um, we have a number that are certified, just recently, this past year attended like a week-long training. Um, where we offer services not only to law enforcement, but to the fire department, tr- any city staff, we offer those services to for any. Major incident or quite frankly, anything if they wanna communicate with one of our peer support folks. Just to bend their ear and um, someone that can listen and then if we need to, then direct them to the services that may, they may need, so.
It, that's a confidential service.
That's a con- yes, confidential, as far as the, the item there, that is talking more so about. The challenges associated with nationwide, lack of funding for mental health inpatient services or outpatient. Um, our community has really stepped up in a variety of ways, a lot of organizations are trying to uh, bridge that gap for our community. To get those services, so maybe we, we don't necessarily, you know, we can, if we can reduce. The, uh, an individual, maybe that's on the street, get them into housing, get them the help they need, that's just gonna better suit and serve the community in the long term, so. How that looks exactly right now, we don't know, but we wanna keep our options open and see how we as a law enforcement agency. Can be a strong partner and, and help facilitate that, so.
But to be clear, Chief, that, that the public sales tax money passed would stay with police and fire. Even though, even though you're talking about behavioral health, you're talking about how, how you could improve your ability to help the community, not, not subsidize something else.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
We, we talked about it at length with the citizens committee that we met with and the general consensus is. When the police show up, they're the police, and so things get handled the way the police handle things, which is. A lot different than what a lot of people need when there's a, somebody gets a call, there's a call, hey, somebody's over here. Um, it's not necessarily always the best thing if a police officer shows up if somebody's having a mental health crisis. And so the idea was, um, without being too um, specific. This tax is for ten years, there's a lot of things that happened ni- nine years ago that we were thinking about when we passed this one that we didn't foresee that we would have today. And so we wanted to have the flexibility and be transparent with the community, there may come a time where that behavioral assistance, whether it's a, a, a position, whether it's. Funding to support another position somewhere else, um, that would support our police and fire as they were the first responders on site, but sometimes they're not actually the right. Um, qualifications to handle a mental health crisis or something else, so it's kind of vague for a reason, but it's a good question, I mean, it's.
But I would envision it's a little like our family, uh, response advocates, you know, the, the police calls. In our advocates when it's, you know, not a police matter, but something that the advocates can help the family with, so it'd be that level of professional.
I agree, re- referral type service and someone in plainclothes and just a softer feel to the whole situation, it better help somebody, yep.
There's a lot more wear and tear on police vehicles than there are fire trucks. And, you know, when you talk about one can be twenty years old and still look as good as it did the day that you bought it, but. You, you, I understand the aging out part of it too.
Yes, and it, it absolutely, it's, you know, it's little things that, that build up over time, you know, we, we can. We can work on, maintain them, get them back working correctly, but there's, there's always, whether it's, it's a small leak that starts in, in the pump piping. Um, or just engine, engine wear and tear, those big diesel engines, when you start them up and go full bore right out of the gate. That's not the best thing for a diesel engine, they like to warm up slowly and, and get the temperature and then work hard, but. But the way that we use them, which we need that, that larger engine, but the way that we use them is we start them and we go. Um, so it's, it's, I guess it's kind of a shock factor to them.
Sure, and when you take one out of service, it goes on purple wave, I'd say, or do you, how do you do that?
In, in the past, I'm not sure if, if we've purple waved uh, a full fire apparatus, but we do look at, at either. Selling or, or figuring out maybe a discounted price to, again, smaller departments in the areas, because they do still have life in them, they do still have a purpose.
Sure.
And since it's a sales tax, like Commissioner Montell said, I mean, it's kind of paid for.
Yeah.
By the taxpayers in the region, so it's, it's always nice to help a department that can't afford.
Sure.
Um, we donated them before, haven't we, Matt?
Yeah.
You're.
Yeah. Well, after they got engine one, they, they donated an apparatus to.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
So the last, oh, many more, go ahead, there's more questions.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Very much needed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The last thing, we do have one more thing we didn't mention, um, this is a special election, these are taxes.
Oh, hold on.
There's Henry.
You're on.
Hey, this is Henry.
I know, Henry, you're on, go ahead.
We, uh. Um, this money can't be spent on, it, this won't um, fix a park, this won't be used um, for um, the finance department. This won't be used to fix used sewers, this is earmarked for public safety, that's a question I've been asked again and again, and I think it's important that we make sure people understand that, that. We, we have a, we have a website out there, we've been tracking it every month since the initial one was passed of what the expenditures have been. You may tell Henry to mute his uh, phone.
Tell him to mute it.
I can mute it.
No, that won't mute his end.
He won't hear.
What?
Tell Henry to mute his phone.
He has to mute him.
I did, he did.
Okay.
Henry, he probably heard, anyway, I don't know what I was saying.
Dude, how much money does uh, that sales tax generate per year?
Well, when we passed it, it generated about one point nine million, um, now it generates about two point five, two point six. Um, which is good because the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar fire truck that we replaced nine years ago is now over a million, so. Um, both sides of the equation are going up and that's why uh, the sales tax has worked out well for a funding source to additional public safety.
And that's a year.
Thank you.
Brooke, thank you very much.
Much free time.
Thank you.
Henry? Henry?
We can't start early, so.
You there? Nope. I was gonna ask him if he got any.